If that's the intention.
Yeah, I don't know, it's not intended. Somehow I lost my.
You can go ahead.
My video.
Kathy, you can go.
This is the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting and we are holding this meeting remotely via Zoom. Important notice. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order nine twenty-nine twenty dated March seventeen twenty twenty. Regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on television and or online in accordance with the executive order N twenty-nine twenty. The public may only view the meeting on Millbrae Community Television Cable Channel twenty-seven or online at WWW M C T V dot TV. The public cannot come to the Millbrae Council Chamber to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. Submission of public comments for those wishing to make public comments at the July twenty 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 Planning Commission meeting, please submit your comments by email to be read aloud at the meeting by the Planning Administrator. Email comments must be submitted to Planning com meeting, D O M M at C I dot Millbrae dot C A dot U S.
Sir, there's someone speaking.
Am I on?
Go ahead. Continue on.
But you can, you can mail the rest, rest of people except Chair Quigg.
Yes.
I'm hearing a lot of people talking. All email comments must be submitted prior to seven P M. All email comments shall be subject to the same rules as would otherwise reverend speaker comments at the commission meeting. Electronic comments for the July twenty 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 commission meeting may only be submitted via email. Comments submitted via text message and social media such as Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, etc. will not be accepted. Reading of public comments, the planning administrator shall read all email comments, provided that the reading shall not exceed three minutes or such other time as the commission may provide. Consistent with the time limit for speakers at a commission meeting. The email comments submitted shall become part of the record of the commission meeting. At this moment, I'd like to call to order the Millbrae Planning Commission of July the twentieth twenty twenty. Welcome to everyone and we will now cite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance, please join me, allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States.
Of America.
Thank you. Will we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Quigg.
Present.
Chairman, I mean, sorry. Vice Chair Joe.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Feng.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong has not replied, so I'm not sure. So I'm going to say he is absent at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point is the agenda review for this evening. And I would like to make a change. I don't know if anyone else has any changes. However, I would like to flip-flop public hearings A and B so that we can hear one La Cruz Avenue first and nine oh three Springfield second. The cruise should be fairly quick and so that way we would not have to keep them waiting. Do I hear anything from the commissioners?
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I think we just need consensus, but.
Comes up.
So.
I'll be fine with it. I'll be fine with it. Thank you.
So one, two, three, we're good. Therefore, public hearing B will be heard of first before A. The minutes. We have three sets of minutes before us this evening. We have May fourteen, May eighteen and June the fifteenth. And one of them was a special meeting. I'd like to do each one of them individually. So I'm going to start by asking comments on the May fourteenth special meeting minute. Do I see any comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve that.
Second to approve it.
Vote, please. Can you please, do you want a hand or do you want a call?
I can either, any way you choose. So I'm going to go with one, two.
Why don't you go ahead and do a roll call?
Yeah, just do the roll call if you can.
Okay. Chairman Quigg.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Joe, Vice Joe.
Yes.
I'll get used to that. Sorry. Commissioner Feng.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So that's four to zero to pass.
The next minutes are of May the eighteenth. And this was also a teleconferencing meeting. We had a busy meeting that night, did we not? So we have any questions or comments about the minutes of maybe eighteenth?
Yes.
Maureen.
On the minutes section, I'd like to just cross off late paperwork everywhere it applies. The paperwork wasn't late, not really accurate. Where do you need to be there?
Oh. Gotcha. I will go ahead and do that.
So through the chair, I actually with this set and with the June minutes. I know that we want more detail, but I feel like this was a lot and I I don't, I think it loses its effectiveness if it's this detailed. So I don't know how the commissioners feel, but I, like page five of the May teen minutes, I could not, I mean, you know, it's like, it's a block of print and I know we're trying to be accurate, but I feel like you could do that, we could have done that with just getting the main points in rather than every question going back and forth and.
I just, in this particular case, I just knew that there was a lot of discussion. So I know that's why this particular one was.
Well, this one and the second, the, the June one was as well. And I don't, I, I mean, again, that maybe that's just me. I tend to like more detail than less in general. But this is just, if I were to have to refer to these minutes later, you know, years later, I'm trying to figure out what exactly the point was and what were the takeaways is, is not there. And I believe the minute should be more action items and then significant like observations or directions by the planning commission rather than every discussion.
Right.
I, you know, I, that's, that's, those are my thoughts on that, on both sets.
Appreciate your comments. Vice Chair Joe, is it possible, it was a bit overwhelming, is it possible that they can be run, rerun where I know it would lengthen it tremendously, but each commissioner, their question and answer or their comment and then maybe a double space and then something else? Do you think that would be appropriate?
Let me work on that for you and see if I can.
But because not every comment really needs to be referenced here is my point, I guess, is that we have a lot of discussion, but after all, the discussion is done at the end of each, each topic. We do say, does a staff have the direction that we need? And, you know, the main points come out rather than showing, you know, Commissioner Davis said this and the response was this and the response was this. And I, I don't think we need it to be a transcript. We have the recordings and, you know, that's always been something that's, that I always usually end up going the other way where I'm like, can we have more detail in there? But I think the main, as long as the main points are captured as to maybe what were the main directives, what were the main objections or main, the positive feedback? And to leave it at that rather than having every single back and forth, then if you bullet pointed, I don't think it will be as long.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think bullet pointing it would be a good idea, but you know, like you said, action minutes are more important. I mean, I understand that this is more of a a study session, so it's not so much of actions per se, but try to capture the main ideas that we brought up on the bullet point instead of, you know, trying to write a book about it would be a little more easier to read.
Sounds good. I will get on it.
So I hear consensus that we would like, like to see, re-see the May eighteenth minutes. Would that be possible? Bernadette.
Sure, absolutely.
So we're going to reevaluate. Okay. The next minutes are of June the fifteenth and that also was a teleconferencing. Do we have any comments about those minutes? Do we have a motion?
I mean, again, I would say the same thing, although it's shorter, so it's shorter as it is, but I would still say the same thing. I mean, this is about our A D U. We talked about our A D ordinance and I think that's important to capture what is the directive of the planning commission and where were we going towards? So I personally would like to see it be done if everybody else is, it's shorter at least, so it's a little more manageable, but I just feel like it didn't, it doesn't capture, well, it does at the very end, I guess, but anyway, I, I personally would like to see it be done, but I'm not gonna, if everybody else is okay with it, I'm okay to let it go.
Does.
Commission.
Where I read it, but doesn't counsel need these minutes soon?
They actually are postponing it till. I'm not sure. When is that, Roscoe?
To September, after the August recess.
So that was my main objective is to get them on paper so that counsel had them for the twenty eighth.
Okay. But yeah, envisioning what the important parts are that we're, we're trying to communicate to counsel basically is the level that we're looking for here.
And it does actually have it on like the page.
That's true. There is that one list.
There's that summary and I almost feel like that would have been fine, you know, rather than all of the discussion.
Well, but they do need it in a timely manner. I think they have a certain amount of time they want to try to hit, right? So.
But now it's not till after, not till September, so.
Okay. I hear that we were, we reevaluating and that both the minutes of the eighteenth and May eighteenth and June fifteenth will come to us at another meeting.
Yeah, just these two, correct? Just the May eighteenth and the, okay.
Approved.
Okay.
Okay. So now is public communication. Are you going to read all the public communication now or the items that are related to seven A? Are you going to read those public?
I believe we should read those in connection to the actual item, don't you think?
Do you have?
And I have no other comments than for one of the public hearing items.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's no general public communications at this time.
The consent calendar, we have one item and that is six forty-six Hemlock and that is the extension of approved design review permit variance and setback exceptions allowing the construction of a new of the one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made from one of the commissioners. Do we accept the consent item or does someone want to call it for comment?
I move to approve the extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there was a motion from Commissioner Davis and a second for Commissioner Quigg that can sign, the consent item is extended. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is public hearings and it is item seven B and it is one La Cruz Avenue, a conditional use to allow for open space use in downtown improvements area. And this is a public, so can we have the staff report?
Yeah, so I think Commissioner Joe would like to make a comment before we proceed with this item.
Yes.
Yes. So I just, just to let you know that this is, thank you. This is actually because it's impacting me personally in terms of my personal business. I will be recusing myself and I will actually log out of Zoom temporarily. I wanted to also make for the sake of the, of the public, let, let everyone know that I did, have not spoken to any of the other commissioners about this project at all, as I wanted to make sure that it was done in a, you know, in a clear manner, transparent manner. So I will be logging off for a bit and then.
Okay.
I will send you an email.
Please.
Text her and tell her we're back on. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very. So could we have the staff report for one La Cruz?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Gavara here, Assistant Planner of the City of Millbrae. And if I could just share the screen real quick. I think Bernadette, I need your permission for that one.
I think I need to do that. Hold on just a minute. There it is. There you go.
Should I be able to? Let's see. Are you seeing it?
There you go. Oh, wait, yeah, there you go.
Right, right. Let's see, I'm trying to get it to be a slideshow. There we go. All right, good evening, Chair Quigg, Planning Commissioners. The item that we have before us tonight is a conditional use permit at one La Cruz Avenue. So I'll just give a quick presentation and then I believe the applicant is, is a part of the Zoom meeting as well. So just a project introduction, like I mentioned, it's, it's a, the applicant is applying for a request for a conditional use permit for office space in a second story. It went La Cruz. It's, it's located in the downtown improvement area of the I A zone. So just to give a quick project location, it's like I said, the I A zone, it's on the corner there of La Cruz Avenue and that frontage road of El Camino Real. A bit of background information, it's in the downtown improvement area. It's secondary frontage, meaning that it's on the second story of the building. Office space is allowed in, in this area, but it's, it's allowed through a conditional use permit. The building itself is existing, existing uses on the first story. There's a ramen restaurant and nail salon, a hair salon and an acupuncture center. The second story contains the six vacant units, which are the, the ones that were, were, the applicant is proposing the office space for and then three residential units as well. The six vacant units were previously used as office space as well for civil engineer for thirty-five years, I believe. But they have been vacant for the past year. And here's a picture of the, of the building, one La Cruz. The proposed project itself, so like I said, it's, it's to allow for office space on the second story of one La Cruz. Of the six suites that are in the second story that are vacant, three would be proposed as real estate offices. The other three would, would remain, remain vacant for the moment, but the C U P through its approval, they, it would allow them to be office space for future tenants. For the specific real estate offices, the, our self operation would be generally from nine to five on weekdays. But a lot of the work being that it's real estate is conducted outside of the office itself. And there is some weakened office use as well. Trash and recycling that's done through an alleyway in the back, the rear of the building, there is parking available on street parking, both on La Cruz Avenue and then on that frontage road of El Camino Real. And the proposal doesn't include any sort of interior or exterior renovations. Just to give you an idea of the space itself, here's the floor plan for the second story. You'll see the two oh four, two oh five and two oh six down here. Those are the three that would be used for the real estate office. Two oh one, two oh two and two oh three would be, remain vacant at the moment, but through the C U P, they would be allowed for future office space. And then this is just a layout of the furniture of the, of the three suites that would be, would be used for the real estate conference table and two oh four and then two oh five and two oh six with desks and printers and then all the usual kind of office stuff. So these are the findings that the commission needs to make in order to grant the conditional use permit. Staff feels that the application and the proposal does meet these. Since it is office space, there's no real use, there, there's no real need for high visibility or a lot of foot traffic. Staff feels that, that the proposed use wouldn't cause any parking issues or, or increased traffic to any sort of extent. So we do believe that, that the second story is for office space in the D I A zone would be, would be adequate in this proposal. I want to reiterate that for thirty-five years that did serve as an office and it has been vacant for the one year. And then there's no exterior or interior. There's no exterior interior work to the building itself being proposed, just for the use of office space. So in conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission consider adopting the resolution, approving the C U P to allow for the office space, subject to the conditions of approval that you'll find in, in the staff report attachment. Staff is available for questions and I believe Stephen Johnson, the applicant is, is part of the Zoom meeting as well.
Thank you very much. Or do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Gavara or Assistant Planner?
I don't have any.
Okay. Hearing none. To have Mr., I believe Mr. Johnson who was representing. Mr. Mizello, does, do, does he have anything to say?
Correct. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. Okay. I just want to say first of all, thank you to everyone for getting this on the board or getting this on the agenda in a timely fashion. I think Nestor wrapped up everything and summarized everything very adequately. This is a very important building to my, to my client's historical building. His grandfather built this during the Great Depression and has a lot of history. It is home or occupies multiple different businesses on El Camino as well as La Cruz. So I think just to reiterate that, it would be nice to have some type of mix upstairs in the resident, or excuse me, in the, in the commercial space and that's pretty much it. That's all I have to say.
Do any of the commissioners, are you completed, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any.
See anything, but I'm not seeing any of the commissioners at this moment, except for Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions?
No.
Being none, do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I move to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay. Can we have your votes and can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quigg.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Feng.
Yes.
So that's three to zero, Commissioner, Vice Chair Joe has recused herself.
And.
Zero to pass.
Please refresh my memory. Does this require ten day appeal process? Does this have a ten day appeal process?
Nestor.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes, this.
We don't need a ten day.
Yes, we, we do, should say the appeal process.
It is. Okay, so there is a ten day appeal process on this. I guess this is just like any other public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Johnson, you can tell your client that there is a ten day appeal process on this.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda and if we contacted.
I'm contacting her now. I just sent her a message. She should be coming back on.
Okay.
I'm not muted, am I? No. Give her a quick second to receive. Here she comes.
Hi.
Welcome back.
F Y I. Item seven B was approved and there is a ten day appeal process. Okay, next item on the agenda for public hearings is nine oh three Springfield Drive. And this is a design review permit to allow a lower floor addition and partial demolition and a new construction of a two-story residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper floors setback of the two-story, single-family residence in the single-family R one zoning district and can we hear the public comments now or do you, well, generally, they usually come up after the staff has made their report and the applicant has made their report. Is that when you're going to come on?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how we usually.
Well, that's how we normally do.
No problem. Absolutely.
That being said, it's faculty for the first place.
Yes. The screen here.
Mr. Fielding.
Yes, go ahead.
You could have access, Sam. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Chair Quigg, Planning Commissioners, Project Applicant and members of the public. My name is Sam Fielding and I'm the Senior Planner at City of Millbrae. Tonight I'll be presenting the design review permit application for nine oh three Springfield Drive. Before I begin, I would like to provide an update that after the packet was sent to the commissioners and was prepared, staff received six letters in support of the project today. Five of them are residents in Millbrae and one is a neighbor. The letters have been forwarded to each of the commissioners' emails. The project is located at nine oh three Springfield Drive. The existing home was built in nineteen seventy-one. It's located at the end of a cul-de-sac street east of Alphway in the Glenview Highland subdivision. It's located at the end of a cul-de-sac street east of Alphway in the Glenview Highland subdivision in the East Hills area of Millbrae.
Mr. Fielding?
Excuse me, Sam?
Your presentation is not on the screen.
It is not, okay. So let me apologize here.
You have access, so I
Yep. Are you seeing it now?
No.
Oh.
No.
I can pull it up if you if you'd like and then just let me know when to
Well, I have, yeah, I, let's see, it should be on screen one, that's
We're not seeing anything right now.
Anything at all?
Okay. Let me Are you seeing it now?
No.
How about now?
No.
It's not in, it's not on that screen there, no. That's strange, okay.
Here it comes, oh, here it comes. There you go.
Okay. Great, okay. Are you able to see it now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, apologize for that. So the project is located at nine oh three Springfield Drive. The home was built in nineteen seventy-one. It's located at the end of a cul-de-sac street east of Alphway in the Glenview Highland subdivision in the East Hills area of Millbrae. El Capitan Drive is located directly adjacent and below the lot on the eastern side of the property. Most of the residents are two-story ranch-style homes built in the late nineteen sixties to early nineteen seventies. Several nearby two-story homes on Springfield Drive have been closed, second story front balcony and were built with no second floor setback. Both El Capitan Drive to the east and Clearfield Field Drive to the south are screened by a large stand of cedar pine cypress and oak trees in the backyard of the residence of nine oh three Springfield. The majority of the existing is will remain untouched. As a condition of approval, tree protection measures by a licensed arborist shall be installed and verified prior to the issuance of building permits. This is a image of the existing property on your on your left or to your right and then the rendering for comparison. The existing residence is a two-story, five-bedroom, three-bathroom residence. The residence includes a two rear uncovered decks and a two-car garage. The proposed project will also be a five-story or also be a five-bedroom home. It's a two-story horizontal addition, partial demolition, interior renovation. Will include five and a half bathrooms and a three-car garage. Plus two driveway spaces for a total of five parking spaces. New front yard landscaping included will include two new trees, synthetic grass and drought tolerant shrubs and ground cover plants. The front yard also includes a permeable driveway walkway and the rooftop solar panel array will be provided as part of this project. There are two adjacent neighbors were contacted and they opposed the project. Nine oh six Springfield Drive has view and light concerns. And nine eleven Springfield Drive has concerns that the house will be rented out as apartments and on-street parking will be a problem. Emails were received on July fourteenth from nine eleven, nine nineteen and nine twenty-two Springfield opposed to the project with the same concerns regarding apartments and on-street park. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there were six letters of support received today for this project. This is a plan showing the existing site plan. This is the project site and the yellow diagonal striping is are the areas of the addition for the project. The three trees that there are three trees that will be removed as part of this project. And they are located at the back, in the backyard. These three trees here which are a six-inch oak tree, an eight-inch oak tree and a ten-inch pine tree. These will be needed to be removed because the proposed project involves adding four retaining walls to the back of the property and so to accommodate the retaining walls, these three small trees will be will be removed. This is the proposed site plan. This is the proposed site plan showing the trees removed and these are the four retaining walls located here, here, here and here. So in order to accommodate these two retaining walls, three of the trees will have to be removed. This is the floor plan, existing floor plan and then the ground proposed floor plan. Here you can see that the applicant is enlarging the kitchen area. Right now, the existing area in the back is a sunroom, so this will be removed. These are the two existing decks, the backyard. Here you'll see, so the larger kitchen area open, sort of an open floor plan. And you can see the bedroom located here, a den located here. This is the main entryway. And these are the three garage parking spaces. This is the existing second floor. Which will be entirely renovated here. The interior walls will be removed. And then this is the proposed second floor. The the primary portion of the addition is this area located back here. The setback exception request is at this location, at this exterior wall and then at this location here. This is a linear feet about four feet of an exception request and this is about fifteen feet eight inches. The the remaining portion of the renovation, the exterior walls will remain the same. The, just the interior rooms will be changed. This is a a close-up of the setback exception request. So I've highlighted the area here in blue, the blue circles of where the applicant is requesting the setback exception. Required setback is four feet. But to accommodate the the bedroom and accommodate the the architectural design of the building, they're requesting this exception at this location and then exception at this small portion here. Where the horizontal rear addition is being added. This slide was provided by the applicant. Again, it shows the existing walls of the second floor. That will remain. And then the second floor setback lot, a second floor setback that's required. This visually, you can see how this would make this second floor very small. It would not be able to accommodate the the rooms with, given that the stairway is located here in the centrally located stairway. So there is some hardship as far as the the physical like architectural, the building design to to accommodate the staircase. And in addition, because of the steep slope in the backyard, having an addition go out is is not really feasible. So it's a combination of the exception requests is being proposed in order to sort of integrate the addition with the existing design of the building of the residence and also to here be compatible with other buildings, residences in the neighborhood. And also to integrate with the existing design of the exterior walls and and the geography of the of the project site. This is the existing and the proposed west front elevation. Currently, you you'll see that there's sort of an eve here. There is sort of an existing step back between the first floor and the second floor. This is going to remain, it'll still have that setback, only it'll have more of a modern sort of contemporary design. This will be a flat roof. And then there's about a four-foot step back here in the front to the second-story addition here. So it will, it will be very similar to the existing building footprint. This is the east existing rear elevation. This is the proposed rear elevation. This is the base, a basement floor that's going to be excavated below, that's for an accessory dwelling unit that is not part of this design review, but is being incorporated overall in the plan. So visually, you can see that this will be, you know, down low, built close to the terrain, the existing terrain of the project site. This is the existing and proposed north elevation. Existing and proposed south elevations. This is a solar panel array that's going to be installed on the rooftop. At the second-story horizontal addition. So a- at the outset, I explained that the the two adjacent neighbors are opposed to the project. The neighbor located at nine oh six Springfield, which is located directly north of the the project site, submitted these photos. They expressed concerns about views and and sunlight. So I wanted to show these photos. Okay, so we'll open those. Let's see. Alrighty.
I don't think this is the right one.
No, 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 I have this one here.
Oh, I saw it. That one.
So these are the photos here. This is a view from the kitchen of the adjacent neighbor. It, can you see that?
But I want to enlarge the view.
We had it in our
Yeah, let me enlarge, let me enlarge this. So primarily, when we look at views, we we look at at view, impact of views from principal rooms, which are bedrooms and living rooms. The applicant submitted a photo from the kitchen. This is their the deck and this is looking south toward the adjacent property. This is the view facing south from the second floor, so mostly trees. Again, this is the second floor. This is the adjacent property where the addition is proposed. This is a adjacent room directly adjacent. You'll see the fence of the adjacent property, nine eleven Springfield or nine oh three Springfield. And this is a view looking back facing north towards nine oh six Springfield from the nine oh three Springfield or looking at nine oh six Springfield. Alright, so the next slide is is So the next slides, the next few photos are pictures from a site visit that staff had updated at ten AM on June eighteenth. You know, due to the concerns of views and the concern of light and use, we requested that the applicant install story poles to get an idea of what that would look like. So this first photo is facing east from nine oh three Springfield on the first floor, showing the horizontal addition to the south. So this is, this portion here is the where the addition, horizontal addition would be. This is another close-up facing southeast. You'll note that there's a lot of trees facing south. You know, these are existing trees in the backyard that'll remain. This is the view facing northeast from the second floor of nine oh three Springfield. This is the adjacent neighbors' views, so their deck and and pretty much the the entire view of the north and east. This is the view facing southeast from the second floor of nine oh three Springfield. The the overall height is at the top of this orange plastic material, which shows sort of the high, the outline of the roof line. This is facing east from the second floor. Again, you can see here where the addition would be and this would be the roof ridge. This is the adjacent property owner. But at ten AM, there was quite a bit of sunlight. You can see here from the view from the second floor to the first floor, showing the second floor setback line and adjacent property fence. Again, looking from the second floor to the first floor, showing the second floor setback line and adjacent property at nine oh six Springfield. So this here is the setback line. And the adjacent property line is over here along the fence. Another view of the second floor. Showing the horizontal addition. This is the first floor and the the roof line. And the the room from the neighbor that had concerns about light is is located down below here behind the fence. At ten AM, there was still quite a bit of sunlight still coming in. And the sun was pretty far overhead, so evaluating the sunlight and the location of the the proposed addition, it appears that there still will be plenty of sunlight coming to the to the adjacent neighbor. Again, these are additional photos showing the shadows of the adjacent neighbor. These are existing shadows of the of the home. And this view is facing north on the opposite side of nine oh three Springfield. Showing the first, the second floor horizontal addition with the story poles. So you can see the the deck of the adjacent property owner to the north and then this is the the distance of the horizontal addition. I would go through to where I was at. Continue here. So again, staff visited the site at ten AM on June eighteenth. Based on the evaluation of the story poles, staff believes that nine oh six Springfield would continue to have extensive use to the north and east bay. Trees located to the southeast currently obstruct some views of the bay. Some less than significant loss of view directly to the extreme south may would occur, but this is primarily a view of trees in the distance. And the two-story horizontal addition would be constructed within the existing footprint of the rear patio and the ground floor is set back five feet from the property line and thirteen feet from the lower basement exterior wall. It is set back twenty-one feet from the second floor exterior wall to the exterior corner of the adjacent home. The setback from the corner end of the adjacent deck to the proposed second floor addition is twenty-six feet. So these were dimensions that staff got from the plans. And also you can see in the photos that there's quite a bit of distance between the property owner at nine oh six Springfield and nine oh three Springfield from where the deck is and the exterior wall of the home is to the proposed horizontal addition. Staff believes that there is ample sunlight to the adjacent residents at nine oh six Springfield. This was observed during the site visit and the story pole shadows indicated that there would not be a significant loss of sunlight as a result of the project. This is a photo showing the adjacent property owner and the addition. And then this is the second-story addition. So the orange is the lower level basement. And the actual horizontal addition is And the actual horizontal addition is located here. So it would extend up to this point. So the, the view south is still. Pretty large view toward the south that would still be there and. This distance is far enough away, twenty-five feet. From the deck, twenty-one feet. From the exterior wall, the adjacent property owner to the second story. That there still will be lots of sunlight entering and, and. A majority of the view available to the property owner, the adjacent property owner. So based on the review of the plans and story poll site evaluation, staff have looted that the proposed. Rear two-story addition will have less than a significant impact on the adjacent neighbor views. And will not significantly reduce sunlight to the adjacent property owner's ground floor side. The adjacent neighbor will still have a majority unobstructed views north and east for both the first floors of their residence. The staff believes that there will continue to be ample sunlight for the adjacent neighbor. Wanted to talk a little bit about the exterior material, materials for the proposed project. The proposed project will have sustainable plating materials which are UV resistant and thermally stable with lower maintenance requirements. According to the applicant. The proposed residence exterior finish will include first floor white panel exterior concrete wall. White satin color with gray exterior panel. Form for the entry. For the front entry, and the second floor exterior will consist of composite wood panel, royal mahogany siding. And will have three new dormers added to the front, so the horizontal roof form is broken up for visual interest. The owner has considered the privacy of adjacent neighbors by designing a house with no direct new windows facing the bedroom windows of the abutting neighbors. In addition, the renovated residence will closely match the existing house footprint and the building massing at the front and will remain the same. With no increase of height as perceived from Springfield Drive. The first and second for windows will be dark bronze anodized clad aluminum windows. The proposed roof will be a three twelve slope roof with a combination open gable hip type. And as I mentioned before, the rear addition roof will include a new photovoltaic solar panel array. In addition, there's front yard landscaping that will include new permeable pavement, driveway and walkway to the front entrance of the house. And there will be a woodlike steel gate to, to the covered porch entry. This is the rendering of the proposed project. This is the front yard area. The new, new front yard landscaping will include brown cover shrubs and drought tolerant plants along the exterior of the building. Synthetic grass and two new trees, acacia stenophila located at the north and south sides of the front yard. And as I mentioned before, there will be four sets of new concrete retaining walls in the backyard and, and foundations. Designed to geotechnical study recommendations and requirements. So staff has reviewed the project and believes that meets the design review required findings, section ten point oh five, two thousand five hundred C two. Findings A through D, and that it meets the setback exception findings pursuant to finding one and two of section ten point oh five. At this time, staff is recommending that the planning commissioner review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented. And consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a design review permit. To allow for lower floor addition and partial demolition and new construction of the two-story residence. And the setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper floor setbacks for two-story family residence in the single family R one zoning district. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions. We also have the applicant. And we have the geotechnical engineer, I believe, that's, that's here available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. At this point, is there? Any commissioner that would like to ask a question of staff? There are no questions for staff.
Chair quick.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Fun, please.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Fielding?
Yeah.
You mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that there additional opposition came in after the package went out. So I see a nine oh six Springfield and nine eleven Springfield. As an enablement consultation form, you know, opposing the proposal. And I also saw a letter coming from Bernadette Kuntz, the letter coming from Jeanette Rudden. Which is resident at nine nineteen Springfield. Then co-signed it by Robert Rudden at nine eleven Springfield.
Yes, that's correct. That, that was part of your, the planning commission packet. In the neighbor consultation section, there was, I believe there was like two pages of emails that staff received. In, in opposition to the project, and their concerns were primarily that this project is, is an apartment building. And that there will be on-street parking issues. This was also the concern. The, of the neighbor located to the, directly to the south of the project, adjacent to the property. I believe I, staff spoke with her on the phone. And explained that this is zone, single-family residential. So apartment, apartments are, are not allowed. In this area, and the applicant's project description clearly states that this. Rear two-story horizontal addition is for a single family. Moving his, his family members from San Francisco south to Millbrae. And that, that's the primary, a, a purpose of the, of the proposed project.
Okay, so other than nine oh six Springfield, nine eleven Springfield and nine nineteen Springfield, any other opposition?
The, not that, other than only those emails and the, the two adjacent neighbors. The emails that were received are from. A couple of homes that are further away, on the same street, but not direct adjacent neighbors.
Right, so I got nine eleven, right, Springfield, and I got nine oh six Springfield. And then the letter email coming from nine nineteen Springfield, Miss Jeanette Rudden. So those are the only three, am I correct?
That's correct, yep.
I think that. I think we will hear from the comments from Bernadette.
Yeah, that's correct. Bernadette is going to be reading the comments.
Okay, so, alright. And one more question. The exception that you, that the applicant is seeking, they're not. Viewable from the street, is that correct, Mr. Fielding?
That's correct. The, the exceptions are located to the north and south sides in the rear, so they're not. They're not viewable from the street. Right, they're not visible.
Okay. So for now.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
For the staff, you mean? Ms. Joe would like to say something.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Sorry, my mic must be, um, so if I may through the chair, I just had a few questions of staff. You had given us pictures from nine oh six. That were showing, were there any pictures taken with the story poles in place? From nine oh six. I know we have the ones from nine oh three itself, but.
Oh, from, from the abandoned point of nine oh six?
Yes.
No, we, we took the, the pictures were, were taken from the actual project site of nine oh three Springfield.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, couldn't make it out. And then there was a mention of a geotechnical report study, and then. It was said that it would be fine. I knew in the past we've had where we include special conditions. For us, you know, making sure to satisfy the requirements of any geotechnical survey. Do we need that, or can we just assume that that's part of the building department?
Yeah, it's, it's not, unless it's, you know. Under, you know, very special conditions, it's not necessary. This, typically it's part of the building department. And public works are, are the staff, so they will, when, if, if, if it were approved. When it's submitted to the building department, they will be checking the plans to make sure that they built it. As to the recommendations and conclusions of the geotechnical study. It's, it's not needed to. In, to insert as a special condition. It's, it's already part of the project.
Okay, great. And then the, you mentioned that there's an excavation of the basement. How? I, sorry, I couldn't figure all that out. So how much are they excavating below? To make that basement.
So the, that, 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 that part of the project is, is not up for the, the design review, but. That is a, a basement accessory dwelling unit. That's one thousand eight square feet. And it will need to meet, right now it meets the California State ADU requirements for an attached ADU. If the city of Millbrae were to adopt a ADU ordinance. And before they submit buildings, plans, they would need to meet Millbrae's ordinance. For ADUs. So staff is going to be watching that and making sure that it meets. Either the California state requirements or the Millbrae ordinance requirements. At this point, it, it does meet the requirement. For the California State ADU regulations.
And I, I understand that, I just, because on the elevations, I'm not seeing it. So whether it's a basement or ADU or whatever it is, I. I wasn't, it looked to me almost as if it's going to be new level, but then in the report, it said there was an existing base. An existing ADU down there. So on the elevations. I just didn't see it. So is there any further excavation going on down there, or is it just using whatever's already there?
That, they're going to be excavating lower to create that basement level, so. There will be some excavation and foundational work to create the ADU, the lower level ADU.
And that would happen apart from what's going on today, is that the excavation?
Right, right. It, it's, we've included it in the, on the plans, all as one project, but. ADUs are, are approved at the ministerial level. So.
Yep, I got that part. I just wanted to know about the excavation if there's, because again, the elevations is not showing it, so. Which is the outside, but I just would like to know where is. In the new elevation, we do see something out there. Okay, and then, I think. Okay, no, that's it. Oh, the roof height. So from the front, if you look at the staff report. It makes it seem like the roof height is changing by eight and a half feet. That it's increasing to the thirty foot, but I'm assuming that's because. It's building back, and so the, because of the grade, it's getting increased, but from the front.
No, yeah, from the front, it's one height, but we, we measure height in Millbrae according to our ordinance. We measure all corners of the proposed building. So the height from the rear. Of the house. Exterior grade to the roof. Peak is going to be.
Okay, so even though it shows as a change on here, it's mainly, it's mainly because it's going back and.
Right, because due to the slope of the, of the project site of the property, there's a downward slope toward the east. So there's a lower elevation at the back of the property compared to the front.
Okay, so just to confirm from the front, then the roof height is not going to effectively change. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for you.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions?
No.
A question, did Commissioner Wong ever come in?
No.
No.
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. I, I do have a couple of questions, if that's okay. One of my questions had to do with the geotechnical also, because you had mentioned it, and I was wondering. What exactly it was, but you answered Commissioner Joe. Another question I have is. It says a couple of places that they're partially. Demoing the first and the second floor. Do you know what percentage will be demoed? Because it looks like. The hole inside is changing, including the stairway, and the stairway is pretty close to the front. And I, I was wondering because the first.
It's primarily the, 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 the interior demolition, primarily the interior. Portion of the, the rear portion of the house. So this portion, the, the, primarily the interior area here.
But how are they going to make it nine feet? Because currently the house is at eight feet. Height, like all the other houses. The height.
You mean the interior clearance? You mean the interior ceiling height?
Me the floor to ceiling height? I think that, I mean, that would be a good question. We might have the architect explain that on, on how, as far as the design and, and building. What, what do you assumptions as far as the, the ceiling height?
Okay. Because it, I mean, they're normally about eight feet. And. I was wondering how much was being demoed because. If the walls are going to all have to be for a nine-foot ceiling. Okay, I will ask the applicant.
If you look at slide fifteen.
Sam, you muffled.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, on the existing. Front elevation. The floor to ceiling height is eight feet on the first floor, and then it's going to be ten feet.
Oh, ten feet.
Right, and then on the second floor, floor to ceiling height, according to their plans, it'll be nine feet.
Okay, so I'll ask him how, I'll ask the applicant how they're going to. Lift up.
I'm sorry, Sam, would, would you repeat that again? You said the first floor is ten foot?
So the, the, the current existing floor to ceiling height is eight feet on the first floor. And it's proposed to be ten feet on the first floor, proposed.
That's not, that's not what I'm seeing, Sam. I'm seeing if you look at the section view at A five dot.
On the slide page, page fifteen of the slide.
Oh, uh, no, but you need encounter floor joys, Sam. So you need to look at the section view at A five dot one on the plan.
Going to both. Floor is going to be eight feet high, finished rooms.
The way I look at the plan at five dot one is that the, on the, on the ground floor, right? It looks like the interior space, the interior ceiling, floor to ceiling finish height is going to be about nine, approximately. Assuming a one-foot floor joyce.
Wow, I kind of thought it was nine. Okay, but I will ask the applicant how.
Yeah, but let the architect explain it.
Yes, okay, thank you. I think that's all right now. Now, because if I understood correctly, Sam. That they're going to have, have to dig down in the back. Did I hear that?
Yeah, there, there will be some excavation at the back for the basement level.
So from the new grade, the new beginning. To the roof is going to be thirty feet. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, at the, at the rear portion of the property. Yeah, the, from the rear elevation.
So the rear elevation from the bottom to the top is going to be thirty feet. And I know you were talking to Commissioner Joe, but I didn't quite hear. Well, in the front. It's going to be how much higher, because if they're going to make the floors higher.
So it's going from, right now it's twenty-two feet from existing grade to the roof ridge.
Two, two.
Going to the. Twenty-two feet. So it's going to be the same. The overall height will remain the same.
Even, okay, even though they're raising a room, the room nine feet. Okay.
Well, I think we can have the architect explain it, but that, that's what his plans indicate, are indicating that, but.
Thank you very much. There are no more questions of staff. Will the applicant please come up or present a project?
I can try to come up. Commissioners and everyone, thank you and good evening. And well, first of all, I would like to thank Sam and also. Commissioners putting this agenda, this project on the agenda. So I'm going to defer the excavation and also the. So I'm gonna defer the excavation and also the requirement or concern related to the soil and also excavation. And, and, well, we had a neighborhood meeting back in two thousand nineteen, January. We listened to all the concerns the neighbors had, and they were, I would say, maybe plus or minus twenty neighbors who showed up. Comments related to size of the building, parking, and excavation. There are quite a lot of comments. And the owner, Mr. Liu, he is willing to address all these comments. And that's one of, one of the reason why a soil engineer is on board, as well as an engineer. So I'm gonna defer that. Any questions related to the soil and excavation to Gary, our soil engineer? So getting back to the floor to floor height or the ceiling height. So how are we able to achieve higher ceiling without raising the existing roof line? There are a couple of things. The high limit is set. The high limit per Millbrae Planning Department guideline is thirty feet. So all you have to do is just going backward. And one of the project goal is to respect the context of the existing neighborhood. At the two-story habitable space and also the existing one-story garage area. I think it's critical not to come in and, you know what, the owner wants this and that, and you know, you're trying to create something totally completely different than the rest of the neighborhood. So it took us a long time to convince the owner to achieve that. So going back to the ceiling height, so basically, reverse engineering, going back down, you have thirty feet high limit. Every floor to floor height, I mean floor to floor height, like finished floor to finished floor, is ten feet. So, and then with the structures, sprinkler system, lighting, potentially, you need maybe a foot or maybe eighteen inches. But we're trying to optimize the natural light by having most of the steel moment frame in the inboard of the structure. And then the outboard of the proposed house, we're trying to achieve a higher ceiling. So potentially, we could have nine feet. And, but the inboard area would be eight feet, eight and a half feet. And if you do the math, ten feet for the floor height for the basement, and then ten feet entry floor to the second floor. And hopefully, some area you get nine feet at the top floor because of the existing roof form we're not trying to modify. And so owner made the compromise that the entry floor will be the, would be the area with most traffic, and they would spend most of the time. So hopefully, that would have the slightly higher ceiling. But the upper floor, because of the dormer windows and also the three to, three to twelve existing slope, some area will be, will be having a less than eight-foot ceiling height. So that's the answer. And then I think one of the illusion that you may ask is, well, the, the front elevation didn't change the roof height. So how are you able to achieve the ten-foot ceiling or maybe a nine-foot ceiling at the second floor? If you look at the plan, once you get in from the main entry, there are a couple of steps down. So that means the finished floor of the entry floor is lower than the existing. That's how we're trying to optimize. Hopefully, I answered the question.
Do you have an actual presentation, or would you like questions?
No, I actually conclude my presentation regarding the height questions.
Is there something else you would like to add?
Oh, yes, thank you for asking that. Well, I would say this is one of the projects. I didn't expect that it will take more than two years. And some of the concerns, I would say, based on that first neighborhood meeting back in two thousand nineteen, are very valid. For example, the house was rented out, and I'll let the owner comment on that. And the tenant did park their car on the driveway inside the garage, and some of them are partially encroaching onto the sidewalk, and that is not right. And I told owner to address that. And the date of the meeting we had was January twelfth, two thousand nineteen. I think less than a month, owner issued a letter to the tenant to have them address the overflow parking situation. And, and once again, I defer that issue to the owner. And then based on that, I think the owner is pretty serious to become one of the Millbrae City residents. So the tenant, basically, well, the lease was terminated, not long after that. There are lots of misunderstandings about the accessory unit. I admit that I tried to explain to the neighbors regarding the legislations.
I'm sorry, through the chair, if people are not talking, can we mute? Because I'm hearing like paper and I can't hear.
You want me to mute?
Whoever's flipping paper to please mute when you're not talking.
There's not a noise in my house, but that's right.
Oh, I don't think, I'm not sure if it's you, but I'm just hearing, so.
There's noise too. It's not coming from my house tonight.
So anyway, getting back to the ADU legislation, I was trying to explain to a few neighbors who showed up at the meeting. But I even provided link to the state legislation. But I, I have to admit that I failed to address that issue. And, and for some reason, the neighbor perceived the project as a apartment building. And I think their main concern is the noise and also the overflow parking. Once again, I also have to apologize that the owner has been very patient, and he was willing to listen to all the concern. And the size of the original proposed house or addition was bigger. And based on that neighborhood meeting, it, it took me some trick to convince the owner to scale it down if he is committed to become a resident, in which he did. So there's no exception or variance we are seeking for this proposed design. And I really appreciate that Commissioner Quake and also Commissioner Wong, although he is not here today, but they were making time and visited the site, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure the owner appreciate that too. That will be my additional information I would like to share with the Commissioners and everyone.
Chair quit, I think you muted.
Have you concluded with your presentation?
That is correct.
Okay. Of the Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant? I have a quick question. On the rendering, there is one picture of the, and I must say, the house in the front looks lovely, and the house on the back looks lovely. And I do have a little concern with the back, but I'm asking you, on that rendering, I think it's the one that was even shown on the staff report. It shows that when, it shows flat ground underneath. It shows the three stories, and then it shows level ground. How much level ground is there before the slope? Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, the rear part of the existing house has a sunroom.
Can you speak up, please?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, can you speak up a little bit? I'm on an iPad.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The existing house has a sunroom in the back, which is currently supported by poles. And I'm no engineer here, but I can say, or you don't need to be an architect or engineer, you can tell that was an addition done by previous owners or previous previous owner. The project started with, well, Mr. Liu bought this property, and they wanted to expand for sure. But one issue came up is the, well, substantial members of that area supporting, supporting the sunroom. So the project scope expanded to a degree that, well, if we are going to rectify the condition of the support system of the sunroom, regardless of the legality of it, it may make sense to repair the existing retaining wall, supporting the existing entry floor. And then because of that, well, because of the state legislation and, well, the size of the property, it's, it's not the biggest in the block, but it's about fifteen thousand square feet. And actually, nine oh six has the, is the largest property in the block, which is sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. So the owner would like to, well, take advantage of the ADU legislation. Well, if that's the case, we're fixing the retaining wall in the back. We're fixing the support of the so-called sunroom. Then maybe it makes sense to add a legal ADU unit there. Now, to answer your question, Commissioner Quake, what are the level or existing grade of the site? Now, the sunroom, like what I said, is a downhill lot.
I'm, I'm specifically looking at the renderings, number four. And it shows three complete stories, and I believe it's thirty feet. But the biggest question is, that rendering shows like it's on a flat ground. And, and it's, it's not flat by any stretch of the imagination. Am I right?
That is correct.
So, like I say, it's, it's, it's a lovely design, both front and back. But, and I don't know if now is when I should even bring this up or, or later, but I'm, I'm, this rendering just does not give, to me, a true picture of what this very nice house is gonna look at the top of that hill when there is landscaping that is gonna probably be some removal of trees. So I would like to see something that more of what it would really look like. Does that make sense?
Yes. I may have to defer, well, partially to Gary, the soil engineer, to address the proposed slab on grade for the basement level, how come it's flat? And also the four new retaining wall as part of this application at the eastern side of the lot.
Okay, well, I have no other questions right now. Are there any other questions of the applicant from the Commissioners?
Chair, Chair Quake, it's Jean. I think the owner is, I'm sorry, I think the owner is here. So if they, I don't have any questions, but maybe the owner would like to speak.
Okay, is the owner want to speak now?
Hi, I'm gonna be speaking on behalf of my dad.
Is the owner available for a presentation?
I can get him to come.
Or is he prepared, or does he want to?
He was wanting me to speak for him, so I don't know if that's okay.
The, you don't have to. I just was asking.
Okay.
Kathy?
Yes.
They're here to speak, that he's, he wants to talk, yeah.
I can't see anything other, I'm looking at me and that's it, so I can't tell. For some reason, I'm not on the other view at this moment. Somebody has, I don't remember touching anything, so.
Ms. Quake, if I may?
Yes.
So, Mr. Liu, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to make a presentation at your, at your discretion, if you so choose. But you don't have to unless you want to.
Okay, so I thought there's gonna be like some questions that I'd be asked, so I could answer, but not really too sure.
So do you, do you not have a presentation that you'd like to make to the Commission?
Doesn't sound like it.
If you don't, that's okay. You can just stay on and, and answer questions later.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That being said, are there any other questions by the Commissioners at this moment?
So, well, actually, we can save that to discussion later.
See.
Yeah.
Not for me, not from Commissioner Davis, since you can't.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any for applicant either, thank you.
Bernadette, available to read the comments now?
I can read the comments now. Oh, can I ask? Go ahead.
Sorry, Chair Quip, did the soil engineer want to make any comment at all?
I didn't think so, but.
I think Ms., Mr., Mr. Cleaner, I think you're muted.
You'll need to unmute, Mr. Cleaner, unmute your.
Just a minute. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, though, now.
Yes.
Now, okay, we hear you.
Yeah, good evening and thank you for inviting me. And for this project, we did soil investigation. And we recommend that the whole project will be supported on a durable and dependable earth that will reach to rock, with rock material. So it's basically stabilize the whole, the whole slope. Also, retaining walls in the back of the house now in a, in a bad condition, so something should be done over there. And as a part of this development, and we advised to the owner, an architect, that this retaining walls should be designed as a solid concrete or concrete steel structure, drainage should be done properly. And the whole back area should be rebuilt, I would say, structurally, technically. And actually, it's very good question about rendering of the flat house, because it's a lot of effort should be devoted to the, actually rebuilding and reinforcing of this lot. And it should benefit owner and also the whole neighborhood. Yeah, and, and should better rest in the process of the construction and design. And I guess it will be part of the building permit. It's, I can go into the details if Commissioners have some questions.
Do we have any questions of the geotechnical representative?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Can we have the reading of the emails about the project, please?
Sam, I just have one quick question before I start. Sam?
Yes.
Yes.
The letter from nine oh six. The letter from nine oh six.
Yes.
You want me to read it as the email from June? Or do you want me to just read the adjacent um notification? I have all the other ones, but this.
I think that, I mean, I think the adjacent notification is fine because yeah, it 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 the 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 neighbor notification form uh covers the their concerns.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Okay, so I'll start with nine oh six. A Springfield, Kia Chung and Anna Lamb. Uh, they are opposed to the proposal as shown. They provided the photos earlier in Sam's presentation. One, the building is too big. It will be caused the whole foundation and landslide problems. And the second comment is it will block any views, will be unacceptable. It will devalue my property. But that was regarding nine oh six Springfield. I will go forward with um from Jeanette Rudin at uh she is at nine nineteen Springfield, Robert Rudin is at nine eleven Springfield. To whom it may concern, this plan to build onto an existing house is absurd. This is a single residence dwelling that is being turned into an apartment complex. If they wanted to own an apartment complex, they should have shopped elsewhere. Parking is limited as it is unfair to the residents of this neighborhood. I really can't believe the planning commission is even considering this project. We at nine eleven Springfield Drive and nine nineteen Springfield Drive are totally against this addition as it will cheapen our neighborhood. The owners of nine oh three Springfield Drive are leading all prop parties involved that they are moving their family in. This is not the scenario as they will be renting out rooms to a number of people as they previously did before. There were at least six to seven vehicles parked in the driveway and street at any given time. Thank you, Jeanette Rudin, nine oh nine nineteen Springfield, Robert Rudin, nine eleven Springfield Drive. The next one I have is from um Robert Sand at nine twenty two Springfield. My wife and I are a hundred percent against this development. Let's be realistic, it is not going to be a single family home. It currently has five bedrooms, one kitchen and one entrance. How many bedrooms does one need? And a second entrance far from the existing one, an additional kitchen? We are totally against this plan. Additionally, there is no parking now. Does anyone in the city care about the consequences of such a plan? Or are they merely thinking of increased revenue? Would you be in favor if this was your neighborhood? Think about it. Why didn't the city have a neighborhood meeting to allow us to question the city? I offered our home, but we received no reply. Robert Sand, nine twenty two Springfield Drive. And these are four. The first one is from a a Herrick Loy, L O I. And they are attached. Please find my letter of support for nine oh three Springfield. Uh, letter of support for Kevin Lou addition at nine oh three Springfield Drive. Dear Millbrae City Planning Department Staff and Commissioners. My name is Herrick Lau and I am living at fifty five Sherwood Court. I fully support Mr. Lou's proposed building plans because not only going to be beneficial and to Mr. Lou and his family. If his plans were to be approved, it will also be beneficial to his neighbors as well. I believe the proposed addition and renovation will increase the value of properties of homes surrounding and will not negatively affect the neighbors in terms of the view of structural integrity. Mr. Lou has been trying to get building permits for his renovation and addition for over two years now. And I know he would I know he would like to have the building permits approved so he can get the construction completed and finally move in. I support the approval of his building design plan because it appears to me that Mr. Lou has made a significant effort to comply with all building regulations for the city of Millbrae and has also made a significant effort to ensure that the building does not significantly impact his surrounding neighbors and environment. Sincerely, Herrick Lau, fifty five Sherwood Court, Millbrae. The next one is from uh Michael and I'm not sure Wang, it's K U A N G. Dear Millbrae City Planning Department Staff and Commissioners, as the neighbors of property owners, Mr. and Miss Mr. and Mrs. Lau at nine oh three Springfield Drive, Millbrae. It is our pleasure to support their renovation project for their future primary residential home. We really like their plan, shown many energy efficiency designs such as Trespa pura composite siding, if I said that right. Reconstructed, restructure interior internal walls to bring in maximum natural light. Drought tolerant plants minimize the use of water for irrigation, solar panels, etc. We are happy to see their plan with no increase of height as perceived from Springfield Drive. So the bay view will be preserved for the neighbors on Springfield Drive. California has a shortage of housing supplies, so we support their ADU plus the three car garage. We wish for their continuous success in this wonderful project. It will make us proud to see more beautiful houses surrounding our house. And that will also have an incredibly positive impact on adding property value for all houses in the neighborhood. Sincerely, Michael Wang, one oh eight six Clearfield Drive, Millbrae. The next one is from a Brian Yang, N G A I. My name is Brian Yang and I am a full-time Realtor and resident of Millbrae. This letter is to fully support the renovation project at nine oh three Springfield Drive. I have been living in Millbrae since twenty ten and we love the city of Millbrae. I have looked at Mr. Lou's drawing and I believe his plan was very thoughtful and reasonable without much influence to the neighborhood. His addition will not only give him more living space to his big family, but also increase the value of the neighborhood. I know it's been more than two years since he told me about his plan and I hope his project can get started soon. Sincerely, Ryan Yang, one four two seven Madera Way, Millbrae. The next one is from a Larry Fowler. This letter is in regards to the property at nine oh three Springfield Drive in Millbrae. Mr. Kevin Lou is an outstanding citizen and continent of all rules and regulations per the planning, building and engineering departments in the beautiful city of Millbrae. He has been trying for over two years to get his backyard addition and the front house face redesigned done. He has hired surveyors, engineers, consultants and contractors to inspect and make the best possible decision. He has spent considerable monies to satisfy the city's requests and respectfully request that the proposed additions be approved. The new design does not block neighbors' views. It does not add to soil erosion and the house is only for Mr. Lou's immediate family. In fact, it can only add to the property value of the other neighbors' houses in the area. I have a background in architecture and I feel that pushing the front wall back for the second floor addition is absolutely not needed. Plus, moving the wall back defeats the purpose of the second floor addition. Respectfully, Larry Fowler, four one nine Anita Drive. The next one is from.
Is that the last one?
No, I actually have, including this one, I have three. This one is one of three that I have remaining.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, the next one is from Lawrence Chow. Letter of support for Kevin Lou addition nine oh three Springfield Drive. My name is Lawrence Chow, C H A O. I am a practicing physician in the city of Millbrae and San Mateo. I have been living at one one two oh Ridgewood Drive in Millbrae for over twenty years now. So I care very much about the city of Millbrae. I personally know know Mr. Lou and I fully support his house design request. I remember when he first told me about the renovation that he wanted to do to his house and I cannot believe that two years later, he is still trying to get this renovation done. A few years back, I had a major renovation to my house with the existing structure intact. It is very hard to be a hundred percent compliant with the city of Millbrae's engineering requests. But Mr. Lou has already tried to comply with the building code as much as possible. I have evaluated Mr. Lou's property and it seems to me that his addition request is very structurally and environmentally sound. I know Mr. Lou has been trying for over two years to get the work to his house done. This includes a backyard addition and a second floor front front house face redesigned done. These additions will only add to the overall property values of the whole neighborhood. I am also of the understanding that the new house design adds more parking space, thereby taking a car off the street parking. Respectfully, Lawrence Chow, one one two zero Ridgewood Drive, Millbrae. The next one is from Karen Trin. My name is Karen Trin and I have been living at three two five San Pablo Avenue for over ten years. I have looked at the building plans for Mr. Lou's proposed building plans and I fully support them. Mr. Lou has been trying to get the building permits for over two years now. And I feel that his proposed buil- building plans are well-designed and have been compliant to the city of Millbrae building code as much as possible. I believe Mr. Lou's proposed building plans will not have any significant impact to his surrounding neighbors and should be approved. Mr. Lou's building plans will not have any increase in height of the building and will only have an extension of a couple of yards. So the view of the neighbors will not be obstructed. The addition and renovation that Mr. Lou is proposing will only add value to the properties that supr- that surround Mr. Lou's residence. So the approval of Mr. Lou's building plan will be beneficial to the neighbors as well. Sincerely, Karen Trin, three two five San Pablo Avenue, Millbrae. The last one I have is from Eric Schlegel, I believe is the last name. My name is Eric Schlegel and I am a member of the Millbrae community. I have been living in the city for over eight years. I know Mr. Lou and I fully support his house design request. The second floor setback is a very worthy renovation. He is adding a new design to the front of the house without extruding far beyond the existing front wall space, keeping the original structure of the second floor. The addition to the second floor only carries the second floor out several yards without extruding further into the yard and not blocking anyone's views. Mr. Lou has been trying for over two years to get the renovations to his house completed, including an addition and a renovation. These additional, these additions will only add to the overall value of the surrounding properties. I have evaluated Mr. Lou's building plans and it seems to me that his addition request is very reasonable and has a minimal amount of impact to his neighbors and surroundings. Sincerely, Eric Schlegel, one eight eight Willow Avenue, Millbrae. And that concludes the public comments received via the email.
Thank you very much. Now you need some water.
I know.
You know, I um, does anybody else have any questions or does the applicant have a rebuttal to to the comments that were made in opposition? No, I don't see any.
Hi, um, I would like to speak.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, so regarding the comments about how it's going to be used as like a rental property or um apartment complex, like they say. So it's not gonna be used for that purpose. And um my parents, they bought this house with the purpose of moving in and like using this as our long-term home. So we don't intend to rent it out or anything. We want to have it like they want to have it as they want, so we can just move in and have enough space for everyone to stay. And over these two years, they've spent a lot of time and money to make sure that um everything is gonna be compliant with the codes of Millbrae and to make sure that like we minimize the amount of impact that we're gonna have on like our neighbors. So like, just for example, they had some comments about how the property is gonna be too big or it's gonna affect like the stability of their homes. So my parents, they hired soil engineers to make sure the soil would be able to handle having like a renovation and addition being added to our property. And we also like had civil engineers and other professionals come in and look at it to make sure that everything would be fine before doing so. And yeah, so like also hold on, give me a second. Oh, yeah, um, regarding the parking, um, there's going to be adding, we're gonna be adding extra spaces in the driveway to have for the cars. for the cars that we're going to have. So to make sure, like, we won't have the same problem that we had before. Like where the tenants had their cars all along the sidewalks and driveways. So, yeah, um. Oh, in addition, um, we also made sure to have story polls to show how, like, the impact that we're going to have on other people and, okay, hold on. Sorry, give, give me one moment. Uh, sorry about that. So, um, like, I'd like to request that you guys approve this um, application because especially now, like, with having to work at home or having to do online schooling, like, we would like to get this completed so that we can move in and be able to, like, actually live in there.
Are you completed speaking?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any one of the commissioners that would like to say something at this point? Or should we clo- close the public comment portion of this project? Can I have some consensus to close the public portion?
Yes, I think we can close it.
Close it, okay. That being said, at this point, we will close the public comment section of these, um, hearing. And it will be open for the commissioners, uh, to discuss the project. Do I hear anything from any one of the commissioners? I now cannot see, um, Commissioner Feng. So I can't tell if you're raising your hand or what.
Chair Quip, can you see me?
No.
Can anybody else see me?
Yeah, I can see you. I just don't think she's got enough room on her screen to see all the participants.
Okay, but at least you can hear my voice.
I can hear your voice.
Okay, very well, if I may speak, if I may speak, Chair. All right, so, um, so I went through the entire material package. I mean, it was a very, um, you know, informational-rich package. Um, I think the architect did a wonderful job presenting all the material that is being used in this project. It is a very substantial remodel. It is not a simple remodel. But specifically, I want to address a few things. It's that when I go through some of the opposition that I'm seeing here, right? And so, and then trying to dissect some of the, um, concerns that the neighbors have. You know, so I found that the claim view blockage from nine oh six Springfield, it's rather insignificant. Due to the fact that nine oh six actually has a hundred and eighty degree plus degree easterly view, uh, to the airport. I think they can pr- practically see the runway from, you know, the back of their house. Um, and the main view is not towards the south, where nine oh three Springfield is actually south of the, um, the opponent of the project at nine oh six Springfield. So I find that, you know, when I look at some of the photos that is being submitted, uh, they are taking a sort of a peek-a-boo view, you know, on the side of the window looking, you know, southerly from their kitchen window, uh, when in reality, if they were to sort of pan their photo towards the west, they can see a very clear, um, runway and the airport. So I think, you know, if they lose any view at all, it will be very insignificant. And I think the vast majority of the view and therefore part of the property value coming from, um, it's the open view towards the west. Okay, uh, towards the east, excuse me. So I find that view blockage claim rather insignificant. Um, I also found that the claimed opposition from nine eleven to nine nineteen Springfield, uh, non-substantiated either. Um, and some of the new designs seem to be a vast improvement from the existing condition. They're using actually quite high-grade material, uh, based on the design that I can, uh, that I can review from the plan. They mentioned parking was an issue. And there's some historical issues with regard to tenants parking out on the street and not leaving sufficient parking for the remainder of the occupants on the street. Whereas in this particular proposal that we're looking at, you know, there's plenty of parking being proposed on site. Three being, um, garaged and two off-street parking. So there are probably five parking available on site that are off-street. So I would imagine that the parking situation would alleviate itself after the, um, remodel is completed. So I think the remodel itself is going to become a solution to the parking problem rather than exacerbating the problem. Personally, I found that the project itself is beautifully designed, um, and I think with a touch of contemporary taste. The choice of the window systems are excellent. I mean, they're using, you know, anodized aluminum windows, which, you know, by nature, they're actually quite, um, quite nice. And, and very well tailored for this particular project and then fits in very well the overall design paradigm. The remainder of the material that they use seem to be pretty high-grade. And, uh, the exceptions that the applicant is seeking. It's not viewable from the street. You can even see it. So it is in quite keeping with the remainder of the neighborhood characteristic. All the other design parameters are well within in compliance of zoning ordinance. And therefore, frankly, I think this is the type of project that I like to see more often in our city. So I see no reason to stop this project moving forward.
Are you?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the commissioners?
Kathy, it's Maureen.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just second everything Andrew's just said. It's a beautiful project. Um, I have no problem with the exceptions. The view is not going to be diminished in any significant way and it's going to be a fabulous project.
Commissioner Joe.
I'll, I'll third that and also add, I think some of the concerns are coming from the ADU below. And just as a reminder, that's not part of our, our, you know, that's a ministerial approval that comes later. It's not really part of our consideration. So, um, but, and, and so I just wanted to put that out there. So, but the house, I totally agree. I think it's a, it looks, it's a great improvement and, um, and I don't see any issues and I would just, I would end up repeating whatever Commissioner Feng said, so can stop.
I have a couple of comments to make and I agree with everything that everyone has said. I do have re- reservations on the massing on the back. Uh, the front is lovely and I think the house is lovely. However, um, I went up and down Clearfield and El Capitan more than once since this project has been here. And depending on how much screening there is, the massing on the back, when you're looking, um, from down below and coming uphill crest, it's going to look like all, some of the houses that were built on Clearfield many years ago that are just a very, very massive looking. So, um, I just feel it's, I don't know how to fix it. But, um, I have got big concerns about the massing in the back and the visibility. Often, very often, we just look at what is it going to look like from the street side? However, I think that the view from the backside of this building, and the house is lovely. I have no questions about the house. The placement on top of that hill. And once the screening is gone, is going to be a sore sight. So those are my comments and, um.
Through the chair.
I think we're well-known that, um, I know that there is a condition in there about the trees. Quite now, the vegetation really needs to be totally redone to make it look nice with the house. And I don't know how to ensure that that will happen. And, um, the, um, what was I saying? And I know how important a view is. The way it is right now, there is no view to speak of from the bottom floor. Not, not, not the ground floor, but the first floor that is where you walk in. So I need some help, uh, from the rest of the commissioners and staff on how we can ensure that the view coming up the hill and the neighbors across the street, when they see the emptiness, uh, because there is going to have to be a lot of work on that hill to clean it up. And the house is going to look lovely, but it's going to be pretty massive. It's thirty feet. So when you're looking from El Capitan all the way, those homes there, the homes on Clearfield on the other side of the street is going to be very massive.
I think, uh, through, through the, oh, uh, excuse me, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Craig. I, I wanted to, uh, point out or just mention that, uh, you know, the, the, the addition, it's a horizontal two-story addition at the rear there. Um, I think, uh, al- also need to consider the, the backyard, the, the, the large number of trees that are back there. There's a significant number of trees that will screen the, the house, the addition that's, that's going to be proposed there. Um, if you look at view three in your packet of the existing, uh, uh, site, you'll see the, the, the pine trees and the variety of species, uh, that are there. And you can see the retaining walls below that are going to be replaced. Uh, but I think that the trees that are there will, will help to screen that. And so looking up on the hill, you, you, you will notice that there's a new house there, but, uh, the addition there, but it will be screened primarily by the trees, the existing trees that'll be there.
I did think about that and I looked at it, um, and as the property owner, um, they're gonna, with all those trees, they're gonna have, their view is going to be very, very limited. Um, I stood on that deck and, um, I, it's gonna, in order to make, in order to complement the house, it, because that's what you want to do, is complement the house. That landscaping is going to have to be redone, refurbished, newer plants, the same as they're doing with the retaining walls. It needs to be changed. Right now, I totally agree with you. It is screened. But you start clearing out the trees and it's going to be massive. So I need help on how we can condition this project so that the screening is, is left intact. With new screening, if that's what they need to do, but we need to make sure that there is screening. Because coming up Clearfield and from El Capitan, and there's a lot of houses across the street, it, it is going to be a massive thirty feet on a top of a little slope that's a pretty big slope. And it is not going to be a pretty picture for anybody in Millbrae. It's a lovely home. I don't.
Chair Quip, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So I, I have a little bit of experience with this type of construction building downhill as I've done this many years in San Francisco. So, you know, in terms of massing goes, I get what you're saying, right? So, but, you know, when you look at massing of a building such as this, you know, you look at the front, you look at the side, you look at it from the street view. I, I think, you know, it's pretty agreeable that the massing, when you're looking from the front, you know, you really hardly have any changes at all in terms of massing. Right. So now you, what you mentioned about is, you know, looking at it from behind, like on El Capitan, driving up Clearfield, and I get what you're saying. But if you look at the survey on A two dot one, where the site plan is, they have a very large number of trees on Clearfield Drive as they drive up as well as on El Capitan Drive, looking up through the back of the house. Now, you know, it, you know, the thirty feet number might sound very alarming to you because that is the maximum height we're allowed here in this city. But, um, on the grand scheme of things, when you're looking up, you know, on a big slope, right, reaching up, from a visual perspective, you've got these trees blocking, you know, your line of sight. I would say you can even hardly see, you know, the house for the most part. It's more than likely that, you know, you would never even see the decks that is projected at the back of the building. So I, I think, you know, while the ballot there, while, while the concern there is, is there, um, I think for the most part, the, you know, the existing tree, uh, that is already on the back of the lot would have screened vast majority of the massing that you were talking about in the rear of the building.
Through the chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes. Roscoe Montag, please?
Yes, um, Chair, I, I suggest, uh, we open the public hearing and ask the applicant to clarify which trees are planned to be removed um, at the rear, or what type of trees they are and how big they are. And to confirm that, um, uh, the, the extent of the, the grading and retaining wall work at the back, um, with respect to the existing trees. If you can get some clarification on that.
Or can I, before, i- if I may, through the chairs, well, um, this is Jean. You know, it, they, they actually have their proposed landscaping plan on there and a lot of those trees lining the streets of El Capitan and Clearfield are staying, it seems. So I think that, I think that shield will stay, but I think what Commissioner Quig's concerned about the view is not really a cons- going to be so much of a concern because it is sloped downward, right? So their, their views and whatnot, they're not proposing to get rid of all of those, those screening trees that are, are seen from the street. So I don't think that will be much of an issue. And then in terms of the height and the, the massing in the back, they're not really cha- they're going down. So you will see more building going down, but the, the actual height is not going to change from what it was, what it is now. It's, it's going to be the same. It's just they're building downward. So I, between that and then the, the fact that the trees are going to shade that down portion more than anything, uh, the lower portion, I, I feel like that should be able to resolve it a bit.
I, I would like to open the public hearing also then, uh, to ask the applicant, um, because he had not had, when I spoke with them, they had not had, um, an arborist come out, uh, to evaluate the trees. Yes, I totally agree. If those trees stay, it's not going to be a problem. But I have been involved in too many situations where, uh, they're cut because of disease or something else. And that's what I want to be assured that we keep that screening. And, um, the planning manager has suggested that we, that maybe I could, um, talk with, um, the applicant. Because I don't believe that there has, even though it's on the plans, what they're going to do, I don't think they've had, and maybe they have, I didn't understand him to say that an arborist has been there and has said of that these trees. That an arborist has been there and has said that these trees can remain. Now, those trees are pine trees, the majority of them are pine trees. And often, and it it looks like they've been trimmed. Not well in the past. And like I say, this house is going to be quite nice up there. And right now, there is screening.
So Commissioner, if I may, through the chair, sorry. If you look at A two dot one. Right? There's a a pretty good list of the trees that are like that are be. On the proposed site plan stated that the trees that is going to stay. And they are towards the east and they're towards the south of the property, which also means if you're driving up Clearfield. Driving on El Capitan, you are looking up those trees and then those trees are anywhere between. You know, eight, ten, twelve, vast majority of them are in the twenty inches, right? So these trees are pretty significant in terms of sizes. And. Yeah, please, Mr. Joe.
Sorry, to to add to that, it's actually in the special conditions on special condition A. Arborist, so would it be if that's a concern? Perhaps one way that we can deal with it is to be able to say if any of those trees are removed, that we would make sure that there are. Good replacements or something that can continue the screen. Would that help as an as a condition?
Direction because I've seen too many that all of a sudden they're out in the open. The way it is right now is fine, but once again, we're dealing with pine trees, the majority. Once it gets cleaned up, it it's not going to be as much vegetation as it is right now. And it is this private property, so if he removes something, there's not a whole lot we can do.
Well, so that's what I'm saying is as part of the special condition, if we say because it's a licensed arborist is going to go install and verify. Any tree protection measures, that's that's already in there as a special condition. So if we add on to that, something to the effect of if any trees need to be removed. We, you know, they will make sure to install proper trees or or I don't know how the wording will be, but to provide a good. The good shield or or whatever the the buffer. So that we will preserve that that area. So perhaps we can just add it to that because I don't I don't think we want to spend, you know. Sit here and talk about the trees and which trees are going to go in or out. I think the arborist can do that and maybe we can add that as a condition.
I would have felt better if the arborist had already been there. And said, this is what's going to happen because quite honestly, this landscape plan is is. Is not really important right now because arborists haven't been there. So maybe staff can help come up with a much stronger.
Yes, Chair Quigg, the. The applicant has identified the three trees. There are three smaller trees that will be removed on the plans. So as I mentioned in the beginning, it's a six six inch oak, an eight eight inch oak and a ten inch pine. These are the smaller trees that are located right where the retaining walls will be. But the trees, the larger trees that are along El Capitan Drive on the plans will remain. They're not. They're not proposed to be removed.
Okay.
All of the other trains, all the other trees along Clearfield Drive drive are not supposed to be removed. So when staff reviews the plans into the, when they come, if they were, you know, if if this project were to be approved. When staff reviews the the building permit plans, we will confirm that only those three trees that have been identified will be removed. And that the trees that are providing the screening will remain. That that's part of the application. In addition, there is the special condition that certified arborists will be. Looking at the at the site and making sure that the trees are protected during construction.
Well, they're pine trees, so they're not really protected, so. But whatever, if all the commissioners other than myself feels that that is adequate screening. That's fine.
Yeah, I I, you know, through the chair, if I may. I just want to, I mean, I understand your concern about, you know, screening and I agree that proper screening is important. But we also need to be mindful about, you know, being consistent in terms of how we look at these screening measures. I think in the past, we have not paid as much attentions on, you know, trees in the back of the lot, especially when you're looking up in the back of the building. Right? So I just want to be mindful about, you know, the level of scrutiny we put on these trees. And from a historical sense as well. You know, knowing the fact that, you know, this thirty feet height that they're proposing is within the planning ordinance. I just want to make sure that we're we're mindful about that.
I I'm not making myself clear. How I feel about this screening. The house is beautiful. I. That's it. If everyone else feels comfortable. And that a year from now or eight months from now. That house is going to be screened. Okay.
Chair Quigg, if I may.
Yes.
Just so that staff understands your concerns. With regards to this project and the screening, your your concern is mainly to the rear elevation of the house. In the massive appearance that it could could provide, should screening not be there? So. It's really there to to kind of to kind of provide a visual buffer to the structure. Given that it is, it looks like a a very massive elevation from from. Potentially offsite and and who knows what distances those that elevation be visible from? So that's really your concern. Is that correct?
Yes. Very much my concern and it it is because of the topography, the location. And it's visible to a lot of people, a lot of Millbrae. If this was on a flat lot, a lot, it it would be totally a different story. And just Commissioner Fang, I understand what you're saying, but this is. A different lot than we usually come across. And I have concerns about the screening. If the screening stays as it is. It is perfect. So if everyone feels comfortable that the screening is going to be there. That's fine. That that's my only concern.
Perhaps a condition of approval, if if I could make take a take a stab at this is that. The applicant shall preserve the existing trees with the exception of the three proposed to be removed. As mentioned by staff to the greatest extent possible. And should additional trees that are not in proposed to be removed. Have to be removed through the construction that a robust landscape plan that provides adequate screening for the structure be reviewed and approved by staff. As soon as possible and prior to the issuance, prior to the occupancy of the structure.
That's fine. I mean, if everybody feels comfortable, it's okay. So do we have a motion?
Chair, if I make a motion?
Yes, please.
A motion to approve nine oh three Springfield Drive to design review permit to allow a lower floor addition and partial demolition. And new construction of a two-story residence at a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required upper floor setback. The two-story single-family residence in a single-family R one zoning district.
And a second.
Are we adding that special condition?
Yes.
Yes, yes. In in addition to Mr. Roscoe Maltese. Addition to the special conditions on a screening.
And just one more comment. I I agree that with Commissioner Fang. That the view is really not an issue. And the other confidence were all perfect. And I agree with all of them. I really do not. I have concerns, strong concerns about the removal of trees. Replacing trees where it's going to take six to eight years for it to look like it does now. And I I just wanted to emphasize that. Okay, we have a first and we have a second. And with all the special conditions as noted. And if we could have your votes, please, and I'd like a roll call.
I'm sorry, went through the chair. Who was the second, please?
I believe it was Maureen.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Well, for once I've got I've got the little gallery so I can. Do a better job next time, guys.
All right, so so with that being said, I can call the vote now?
Yes, please.
Chair Quigg?
I'm first. They'll vote with it.
Yes.
My comments were well made and are very important for the minutes.
Okay.
But I will.
Vice Chair Joe?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fang?
Aye.
Alright, so that's four to zero to pass with the condition. I'll let you read that.
And I want to. Tell the applicant that there is a ten day. Time where if anyone wants to appeal this project, they can do so. So. You have ten days to wait before you get your conditional letter from the city of Millbrae. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. Do any of the commissioners have anything to say about new business? Hey, there's Commissioner Fang. Hi.
Oh, hi. I've always been here.
No new business?
No.
No.
You should have it.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was speaking, I'm sorry, I didn't mute myself to.
Staff updates, please. And I know there's nothing written here, so we have to be very generic in our staff updates today.
Yes, you Chair Quigg and members of the planning commission. I would like to take this opportunity to provide a an update to the commission on the development projects that we currently have under review. In the planning division, just a quick note that I'll provide a quick update on these. These projects, but because this is not a noticed public hearing and just to be consistent with Brown Act. There cannot be any dialogue with regards to these projects, so. With that being said. The first project that I'd like to to update the commission on is eleven hundred El Camino Real. That's the Anton project, the redevelopment of the. Arancho Inn that was heard by the planning commission in a study session last month. And they're scheduled for a study session with the with the city council next week, so. That'll that that'll happen next week and we're we're currently going through. The environmental review process and working some additional details out with the applicant. The next project is thirteen oh one Broadway and that project. Is a thirty-three unit apartment condominium building. And the the project is very, very far along. There's a few comments left that the fire department has. And the comment, and the applicant still has to address those comments. Once that, once that those comments are addressed, we'll start the sequel process. We'll do an initial study. And a negative declaration and then that will go to the PC. We're anticipating sometime in the fall. So that 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 should be before you and when in the next few months.
Is that the medical building behind a pancake house?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next project is Amoxio Hotel. So there's a, we have. The environmental view document, the administrative draft, initial study, mitigated negative declaration for that project out for circulation. So per the sequel guidelines, we have to circulate that for thirty days and. A conclusion of that common period is July twenty seventh, so a week from today at five P M. Upon the conclusion of the circulation period, staff will respond to any comments received during that time. Then we'll schedule that for a hearing sometime, I believe, in September, possibly August. So that's looking. Really good. We're in good shape with that and so that should be reviewed by the commission pretty soon as well. Additionally, there's two more projects. One is two thirty Broadway, which is a a mixed-use building. In the D I A and that's ground floor retail and then. Or unit residential above and then parking in the rear. There's some parking issues that still have to be worked out. But that will have to go through designer view and then the commission should be seeing that. Sometime in the next few months before the end of the year as well. The last one is. As you may know, the the state has prohibited indoor dining, so. And and right now, the the business is currently being just a takeout only. However, regardless of the current conditions, the it probably actually, maybe in light of the recent circumstances. The applicant has approached staff with. With a proposal to redevelop the site into a mixed-use development, ground floor retail and. Residential above and then with parking being accessed off of the rear alley. So that that development will encompass the parking lot to the to the south of the building. That's in a very, very preliminary stage and so that's very, very conceptual at this point. Still kind of working out some design issues. But the plan, the future plan for that site is to redevelop. So we'll probably take that to a study session once it's further along, but. That's what we have to do for. For the development projects, the other update that I'd like to write the commission is.
Is that it?
There's there's a couple more. The other one is. Okay. Actually. Okay, so this, you should be seeing the City of Millbrae website now, sharing my my browser. So this is. This is newly launched, so the planning department has launched an active developments webpage on the city's website. Whereby anyone can see a map of the development projects currently. And and this includes. This includes. Large commercial multifamily projects as well as single-family projects that are considered. The question, so this is a map, the red pins denotates. Either multifamily or commercial developments and then the blue is for single-family projects. So there's only, the ones that we only put up here are the ones that are for consideration by the commission. So smaller ones that are staff level or just building permits don't show up here. So currently, this shows up. If you go to. This pull down, you can select by major development projects or single-family projects, so. For major development projects, you'll see them over here all along El Camino and then the Moxies over here. And then as you scroll down, this is one of the crews that we heard earlier. You go to the. To the click on the image, it goes to the. Webpage for this project, so it includes the application number, project description. The design review permit with entitlements required, the applicant contact. The design review permit with entitlements required, the applicant's, uh, contact information applicants, as well as the, the status of this project and the planner assigned and the contact information for that planner as well. So we'll be updating this, this webpage for, um, additional information such as links to study sessions, the minutes for the meeting, um, any, any documents for those meetings, uh, here. So anybody can come here and see what's happening for, um, those particular projects.
I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Mal, I'm not following. How do I get to that site? It looks beautiful, but how do I get to it? I'm on the.
Oh, sure. Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I should have showed you how to do that. So, um, you would, one is, one way to do is just, uh, Google Millbrae Active Development Projects. Um, the other is if you go to community development, uh,
Right.
Community development, um, planning, planning division right here.
Right. Got it.
And then, uh, it's the second link here, active development projects.
Active development project. Here we go.
Yes.
Exceptional. I think this would really help and, uh, great effort. Cause this, you know, it speaks transparency so that our people gets to see what's going on within the city. And, uh, this is the type of transparency that we are so needed. So, good job.
Right. So this is, this is, um, as I mentioned, this is thirteen oh one Broadway. Uh, we can't discuss this, but I'm just an example of, um, uh, what, what the project is about, um, is here. You can read the description. Uh, we'll also, um, link a copy of the plan so the commissioners can really, um, gonna get an understanding of what they'll be reviewing in the future. This project here is a pre-application, um, that we received. Um, this should be going to the commission. It's, it's very early. They haven't submitted a formal project yet. So this is something that is still far off, but this will be a planning commission, new single-family home and a vacant lot. So some of these have been approved. This might look familiar, four hundred Chadbourne, but, um, this will be up until the project is finished. Has, has, uh, received their certificate of occupancy. Um, so some of these other ones.
Some of these have already been approved, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Some of these have already been approved, isn't it? Like four hundred.
Yes.
For example.
So these two have been approved. Um, we will leave them up here until they receive their certificate of occupancy after they're built. Once they're built, then we'll take them off. Um, some neighbors might want to see, oh, there's something being built there. Can I see what, what what is it going to look like at the end? So then they can come here to see what, what, uh, the finished product will look like.
I, I don't suppose you allow people to see, or would you plan on allowing people to see the permit status?
Uh, we don't have that capability yet. Um, they can call in and ask for that, but currently our software system, we don't have that give them.
Would be a great idea to have that.
Yeah. And just to note that, just because this is the image that we have doesn't mean that that's the final product that'll go to the kind of planning commission. This is just what we have as of right now. Um, this is not the final product. Um, we're still working with the applicant on, on this one, for example, um, but just going to give you an example of the ones that are coming, uh, up for review. So that's, uh, yeah, so you can go select a single family. So, and then, uh, who the planner is on this. So yeah, so that's, um, that's all I have to share for that part.
Beautiful.
Do the commissioners have any questions about the actual website itself and not the project?
I'm impressed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it looks clean. Oh.
No, he's not.
Oh, I was just going to ask, so you mentioned after it gets on to, um, certi- certificate of occupancy, it would be taken down. Is there any way to keep them up? I, I kind of, you know, completed projects or something and have them somewhere.
You want, um, we could, yeah, and, and that's, that's so we kind of debated on, on how long we should keep it up there because it could get quite big and, and very busy. So, um, maybe, maybe there's, uh, maybe like one year after it's built, we just decided, you know, we'll keep up until when it's built, because when it's built, then people already know about it. And so we thought that, but if you have other thoughts, you know, we'd be happy to, to, to see what makes sense.
And also, if, uh, if I may, um, Roscoe, I think it's a good idea to, uh, display these information, uh, as these applications come in, become public record. Um, again, transparency is important. Um, I think I've said that multiple times on this commission that, uh, you know, it's, we should make it easier for people to see the status of their own applications or even neighbors' applications. Um, so eventually I think we're moving a great, you know, we're moving in the right direction here. Um, but at some point I also still like to see, um, more information being made available online, especially permits and, and active, um, applications. So.
Yeah.
But this is a, definitely a good step in the right direction.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the comment. One other, uh, so one other, one other, um, that I'd like to share, uh, for the commission. So currently, uh, our Zoom meetings, um, we, we only share or, or have the ability to have the applicants participate through video. Um, but, uh, future meetings, um, will be the webinar format where the applicants, um, or any other member or the public for that matter can, can participate via video. Um, um, similar to how we normally have planning commission meetings. So, um, what they'll, what we'll do is we'll update our, uh, our notices and our documents to provide people with the ability to, to click on the, or join the meeting through the meeting link and provide comments through video. So we're going to update the notices, the agenda with new language so that, um, residents can, can join. What will happen is they'll, they'll be entered into room and then, um, they'll raise their hand if they want to speak on a particular project and then we'll let them in and then, um, they can, um, they can, so you can ask questions with the, the, the applicant as well as, um, some of the commenters. So we weren't able to, to, to take, to take advantage of that feature for this meeting and, um, that's because uh, we had sent out all the notices and, um, the, the newspaper ad very, very early on. So we got that started, uh, very early. And so, uh, we didn't have a chance to kind of tweak the, um, given this is going to be a new format, um, kind of get familiar with it before we had the meeting, but we will have to do that for the next one. So, it'll be very, very similar to what we are, um, the Zoom meeting format that we have here. The only difference is that, uh, we'll be letting people in to actually talk. And that's very simply, this is exactly the way that the planning, uh, sorry, the city council members, um, conduct the hearings now.
Well, let's hope that we can end this Zoom thing and that people go back to the hall sooner rather than later. Right? Would be nice to let everybody walk into the city hall, get a chamber and at the same time get an injection, uh, vaccine.
If, uh, just related to that, though, I think we really need to have the process down well where everybody's muted, who's not speaking and don't let them unmute themselves unless, unless they need to, because
Yes.
it's really distracting just even with us. But, um, if you have, I don't know how many people would join, but I think that's, that's something that I found on a lot of those Zoom meetings is that sometimes people don't realize, um, the noise. So I would just.
To let them in, correct?
On the webinars? Right. You have, but there's also a feature where you can not let them unmute themselves. So I, I, anyway, I, I would just suggest playing around with all the settings beforehand. I don't want to go into all the details here, but I think that's really important to make sure we have that down.
Thank you. We'll, we'll definitely, um, look into that and make sure that we have that.
Thank you, Roscoe. Are you done?
Yes, that concludes, uh, staff's update. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was great. Um, commission comments. Do I see Commissioner Feng? No?
I'm all good.
I'm sorry?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, announcements.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, I know everybody says it, but just thank you to the staff because there's a lot of luck going on if you look at our, you know, our websites and everything that's happening, the updates. So, um, I was, you know, today with the nine oh six, nine nine oh three Springfield, a bunch of people kept saying, well, it took over two years and over two years. And I actually looked at the calendar and it wasn't fully over two. I mean, it was, the application didn't go until December and whatnot. So, and I know there's a lot been on the staff's plate. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there because I, I didn't want it to end with, well, it took us two years to get to this. And so you should let us do the project. I don't think that was really a fair picture of what happened. So, um, you know, just acknowledge that there's a lot of back and forth that has to happen. And with COVID and with all the projects that are going on, I think my staff's been really doing a great job. So, thank you.
Yeah, then with that, um, I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner Joe, um, for this particular project, uh, the, the delay, and this was not anything related to the design. It's really, um, the geotechnical issues. So we had, um, we had the, the geotechnical report reviewed. And so, um, that, that was, that was, that was the reason why, um, this project took a little longer than we had liked. And we also have another project, um, kind of in the pipeline that, um, where there's significant geotechnical issues and it took a really long time to kind of work those out. In, in my experience, um, I worked for the city of Arinda and, uh, in that city, you know, that community, it's all hillside development. And, um, and in my experience, all those geotechnical issues are, um, are deferred to the building permit. So it was not something that was reviewed under the, it's part of the designer view application. Um, so the designer view application will actually proceed and move forward. And then, and then if there were certain issues regarding a geotechnical, that'll be resolved through the, the building permit plan check process. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm new to the Millbrae, um, process and, and how we do things here. So, yeah, and, and if looking at the geotechnical report as part of the, um, design review, it's not, I'd say that it's not necessary. Um, it, it could be deferred. Um, but if there's some level of comfort that goes with, um, approving a project that may be on a very steep hillside or some, have some soil stability issues or maybe some concerns for the neighbors, then, um, we can still maintain that, that current process.
Yeah, I think, you know, if I may add to that a little bit, I think, um, you know, the geotechnical input are usually not that critical for a single-family home type development. As, you know, vast majority of the geotechnical study that goes into a single-family home type development, it's about, you know, soil stability. Um, you know, foundation designs, you know, landscaping, that sort of thing, right? Uh, whereas if you encounter a slightly bigger development, right, like in a, a condo building, for example, six-story building with a, with a podium structure, some of times these, uh, geotechnical comes in, uh, as part of the environmental application. Um, so therefore some of these, you know, geotechnical comes in early for those larger, slightly larger projects would be, uh, you know, would make sense, right? Whereas in a single-family home or even a duplex case such as this, um, usually these things are much more technical in nature and therefore, you know, being a part of the building permits application would be sufficient.
Yeah, it is, is the, uh, the entitlements is for design review. So the discretionary standards. Um, you could still approve a design review application with exceptions, um, if they can't build it because the soils, conditions don't warrant, um, there's.
There are ways around it.
There's, there's, there's always a solution. It's just how much you want or willing to spend.
Right. Right. Yeah. But then, you know, in some other cases where, you know, the excavation is massive, then, you know, you want to have that calculation because that's probably environmental, right?
That's correct. Yes.
So any other announcements? There being none, um, we will adjourn the meeting.
No shredding. No shredding party?
I finished. I'm waiting. I have bags and boxes, Commissioner Joe.
Yeah.
You're moving. You have a lot of shredding to do.
Yeah, I do. Well, I was ready and then the, then this hit.
Yeah, if we could get things under control. I'm, I'm waiting. I have it.
I have stuff that needs to go away.
I know, we're.
I have.
So the meeting is adjourned. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Good night.
Good night. Thank you so much for all.